Good evening, good evening, good evening, Facebook. We are back with another meeting of diverse minds with Keisha Hamilton. And I'm your host. It has been a minute, folks. I am super excited to be joining you all tonight. For a special edition of the show, we have been out since I think, I think June was the last time we met up. And I have missed you all. I feel like, you know, you know, I've been away and you all have been away. And we haven't been having these conversations. And so I'm super excited just to be back with you. I'm also super excited about our guest tonight, Leland Snooks, who's a candidate for the JPS Board. Before I have him, before we kind of introduce Leland Snooks, I will, you all know that I'm always sharing. My posts, so I'm doing that now, just sharing my post. I'm hoping that you all are liking and sharing the post coming in, getting ready to be prepared to ask your questions. So that we can have a lively and productive conversation tonight. So share, share, share away, go on to a meeting of diverse minds. You all are here already. Share away on your pages. Let your family and friends know that we are live and that we have Leland Snooks here with us. So that we can have this amazing conversation. All right, I am successful in sharing. All right, I'm prepared now. Okay, so, all right, so we already have a couple of people on. Thank you all so much. So welcome back to another meeting of diverse minds. Like I said, this is Keisha Hamilton. You all know that on a meeting of diverse minds, we are always talking anti racism, diversity, equity and inclusion. And the subject of voting, which is also part of our special edition on tonight is always a, I mean, it's very much related to diversity, equity, inclusion. And the foundational core of those topics, which is really people engagement, human centered, perspective, human centered decision making. Voting is, it allows us to decide who gets to be in office. So that they are either making decisions for or against human centered design. But diversity, what is diversity? We know that diversity is our differences. It's anything that makes us difference. It's not only, you know, physically what you can see. But on a meeting of diverse minds, you know, we always focus on the diversity of thought that individuals have. Which really relates to our subject matter of tonight. But individuals can all look the same, or they can look completely different and all think the same. And we like to focus on the fact that we need different ideologies, different thoughts, you know, in a space together. I mean, in all, you know, contributing so that we can have a product that is, you know, balanced and that kind of reaches everybody. But diversity, again, it does not only focus on what you look like physically. It does also relate to your, the thought patterns and things that you have. Equity, we know that equity is giving a person what they need to be successful. I've talked often about my girls, I have four girls, I have two older girls and I have two younger girls. My two older girls, they don't need the same things that my younger girls need. So granted, you know, all of my children, and I have six, need love. And so I'm giving that to them, but every, each of them receive love in a different way. My nine year old, that's my youngest daughter, love to her is allowing her to watch Casey Undercover while I do her hair. In the morning before school, that's love for her. That's a part of the love language that she needs some, some, that's when I'm filling her tank, when I'm letting her watch Casey Undercover. My oldest daughter, I can't call my oldest 20 year old into my room and say, hey, look, let's watch Casey Undercover. While I do your hair. For one, she does her own hair. And for two, she's not watching Casey Undercover. She won't feel the love from me. So when she needs to feel love from me, what she needs from me, if I'm being an equitable parent. I am focused on those things that she's needing. She's telling me, you know, I need to talk to you about this. I need to talk to you about that. I need to, you know, I need to pick your brain about this or that. And those topics would not, wouldn't do anything for my youngest child. So again, equity is giving a person what they need, meeting them where they are. And without judgment, you know, without saying, hey, look, you know, why are you in this place? You should want to. Equity is simply, you know, acknowledging this is where you are, acknowledging that there are situations and things that occurred previously in your life. You know, when we're talking about my girls, one of the situations that occurred previously in their lives is that they were born at different times. They had no control over that, right? So again, equity is acknowledging what happened before, recognizing that it did happen. This is what brought them to this place right now, and I'm just going to meet you where you are. And then we know that inclusion is not simply having a seat at the table. A lot of times we've talked about inclusion. Where kind of like the teddy bear, the little girl who's having a tea party, she's having a tea party. She's got all her teapot and teacups and plates laid out, fake cookies sitting on the table, the, the, the tea plates. Some water maybe in the teacups, and she has teddy bears all sitting around the table. A lot of times our inclusion looks like that. We have these inanimate objects sitting around the table. Or we have individuals who are sitting around the table, who we're not including in the conversation. They're like teddy bear sitting around the table. Inclusion actually is, you know, where if we're having a tea party, you know, those who are coming to the tea party, they have been, they have had an opportunity to. Design what the tea party is, figure out what we're having for tea. You know, there are different people who like different types of tea. So we would make sure that we're accommodating, accommodating them, including them, you know what I mean? What decorations we're going to have, what day it's going to be, what time it's going to be. And then when we're sitting around that table, every voice that is at that table, we are allowing them to not only share in a comfortable way. But we're also including what they're saying in whatever finished product we may be discussing. Again, inclusion is not, you know, what we normally see. And that is, you know, a lot of individuals sitting around the table who are just expected to be there because they check a box for us. You know, but we're not, we're not even wanting to hear from them. That's not inclusion. So we know, we talk about those. We know that anti racism is opposite racism. Anti racism, it's, it's an action word. It is recognizing what racism is and racism is a systemic racial prejudice. That our nation has historically had and still has. Where we, you know, we have policies and practices and legislation that has been written in a way to discriminate against people of color based on their race. Or the tone of their skin generally, basically speaking. And anti racism is being aware of that and actively and intentionally fighting against that. And that generally begins inside us, is where that happens. Okay, so. We haven't been together in like forever. So I needed to get that out for whoever might be new. I want you to know what a meeting of diverse minds is, where the, the perspective that we come from, the conversations that we have, we have lots of fun on our show. We get to engage with our audience. Feel free to post your comments. I am watching the comment. Section on the, the post. But you know, this is not, we're not here trying to placate or, you know, be two toned police in this conversation. So we like to be raw and, and just, you know, have a good time. All right, all right. So the man of the hour. The reason why we all are actually here, the reason why we came out of sabbatical, the reason why we're having a special edition tonight. Is because we were fortunate and blessed to be able to have Leland Snooks. Leland Snooks, thank you for being here.
You are very welcome. It is an honor and a pleasure to be talking with you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. So Leland Snooks and I don't know each other from Boo. No. We just met last Wednesday, was it last Wednesday?
Yeah, it was last Wednesday.
So yeah, last Wednesday, we just met at the School Board Candidate Forum. So Leland, let's talk about who you are. Who are you, Leland?
Oh, I am just the star. I'm born, no. So I am a big, big, big education promoter. I tell you what, I have. Pushed myself right now. I'm currently going to obtain my doctorate of education. Yep, it's an organizational leadership. Specifically lean systems, needs, systems, management, systems change. And, you know, I just actually moved to Jackson again, two, three years ago. So I'm, I'm given the chance to substitute within the school district, school system. Gaining some knowledge. I've been all over Michigan substituting actually. So I get to see the changes that are happening. Within our districts, within the state of Michigan. And in some basic stuff, I have two amazing dogs, don't have any kids, so I don't have any direct link into the school. So I think it's great for my, my love of education. It's pure education. There's no personal stake that I have in here. Other than that, I, school, work, school, work, dogs, there you go.
Right, one of the things that you said already that just has me excited is just the, when you're moving back to Jackson. And so that means you've been away from us, which means that you have a different perspective that you're bringing in. I also appreciate hearing you say that you've subbed all over the state of Michigan. Which really, you know, I, so I moved to Georgia for about five years. And I moved back home in 2016. But moving to Georgia gave me a perspective that I could not have had I continued just to stay here, you know, without having a break from this place and then coming back. So I love it that you, you know, you have perspective that you're bringing with you, you know, you have. After having served and subbing in all these different districts, you have things that you see that are working in other districts that aren't working in other, other districts. That you're bringing, all that knowledge is what you're bringing with you. At least that's what I think I'm hearing.
Yes, it, it's been great. I've subbed in so many schools and districts that. It's given me definitely a unique perspective on things that need to happen. Cause we have, you know, community based issues. We have the little bit extensive outside of that issues and then. State issues. And like you said, with Georgia, we have national issues. So you can tie everything together. So we need to bring as much information and as many perspectives as we can to positively make change within our school districts.
Definitely, definitely. The one other thing I want to touch on before I ask you the next question. You said that you're pursuing your doctorate. Congratulations, sir. In education, sorry, I'm gonna let you tell us what you're pursuing it in.
So it's organizational leadership. So it's, if you think about it, it's breeding and grooming the lens of leadership. It's a lot of people, we all have our opinions, right? And this is more focusing your lens on, let's look at the facts. Let's look how we can better a system, you know, systems change and with the cognitive being lean. Balancing these school budgets and utilizing finances the best way possible. Removing the waste, things that we really don't need that are not going to benefit our students.
Yes.
That is, I think is very sublime for this.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I know it's definitely needed.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely needed. I know when, what last week, when we heard, when, when, you know, when we had an opportunity to hear you at the School Board Candidate Forum. I was very impressed with your, you know, choice, you know, in your degree program, your, your graduate program. For organizational leadership with a focus on systems change. At least that was kind of how, that was the best way for me to remember it. And I'm just like, system change, yes. You know.
Yes, and actually going through this program and pushing myself this far, I've had access to a network of schools. Those have been superintendents, principals, people in healthcare that are higher up, that make decisions. It's, and especially the superintendent principal aspect of it, and principal. Hearing their stories from their schools and problems and issues that they face and how they're trying to fix them. I now have that network to be able to go to them and seek advice and be able to gain ideas. And that's something that I'm unsure that the board has done.
Okay.
I would be able to communicate with them and see if they have. Because you can't just rely on what's happening in Jackson. We need to. We need to know how our community is affecting our schools. Different schools within Michigan do affect other schools.
Yes, yes. And, and I love that, you know, when we think about it, these kids are not going to stay in Michigan per se. You know, some of them are going to stay in Jackson, you know, but some of them are going to branch out, go to college, you know, in different cities within, or cities within Michigan. But then some of them are going to go to different states. And we want our kids to be prepared to go to those different states and be successful, you know what I mean? So, so I love that. Just so you all know, we have Leland Snooks here. He is a candidate for JPS School Board. Feel free to drop any of your questions that you have in the post. And I'm paying attention to it now. I'll call them up or if I see any. Leland, the next question. So we know you love education. We know you, you're pursuing your doctorate right now in education. And with, you know, with the focus that it has. So let's bring it a little bit local. What made you want to run for the board? What was, what was kind of going through your mind?
Well, I have watched some of the board meetings. They always seemed to occur when I was working a second job. And it's, it's kind of concerning to me. Yeah, okay, so I'll elaborate on that.
Thanks.
I've noticed that there are quite a few members that. Don't really interact much during the meeting. There's no commentary. They're just. They might say one sentence or a word or I, or, you know, that kind of thing. And it calls into question. How much? Like research have you done to make some decisions? And how committed are you? Doing what's best for the kids and for itself? And because I love education so much and because of what exactly I'm going for. I know that I would be one of these two best choices to be on that board. It's very important to me because. Having that direct link of affecting generations to come. We need people that want to be. And accept that responsibility moving forward.
Just so you know, I'm not sure what, there was some background noise. I'm not sure what, what that was. It sounded like it was almost in the microphone, just so you know. One question I have for you, Leland, based on just kind of what you said, because I think it's really important for us to, to kind of expand on it. I think it's really good. Thank you for just kind of highlighting it. And that is the, the lack of commentary that we have on the board. And so what I want to say, and then I'll kind of. You know, we'll see where we go with the conversation there, is that not a lot of people really understand the, the job of board members, the duties of board members. They don't know that, that all of the decisions that we make are supposed to be made at that table. We as board members, you know, we may have some commentary among one or two of us at a time outside of that table. But the integrity of the positions that board members hold. And that they agree to when they kind of choose to, you know, when they get elected to the board, is that they will have those conversations at that table. So I really appreciate the fact that you noticed that there's no commentary at the table, or very little commentary. Except at, at certain times, you know, there's sometimes there's a lot of commentary. But a lot of times, there's very little commentary. Now, sometimes that's because individuals have been on the board for a long time. And they might already kind of know about what, whatever it is that we're, that we're deciding on, because they've had, they have some longevity on the board. Sometimes it is just a matter of, you know, unfortunately, not doing the homework. That we're, that we should be doing as board members to come and be prepared to have those conversations. But I think that you raise a good point. One, allowing me to kind of let our community know what we are supposed to do at that table, which is discuss. But then also too, when we're not discussing what perspective that kind of lends to the community about what we're doing at that table, you know what I mean? So I just appreciate you highlighting the lack of discussion. I know for me, I do a lot of questions at the table. One, because I am new, you know, I'm just two years on the board. But then also, I also want the community to know, look, this is what we're doing here. As far as this, this is why this decision is being made. And I want you to have all the backstory for it. How do you feel about, you know, just kind of your own self when you think about the prospects of getting on the board? And we're going to speak it into existence, you know, and keep our fingers crossed and knock doors. But what are your thoughts this around, any more, any other thoughts that you may have around just that commentary on the board and the importance of, of those discussions?
So, well, those discussions are extremely important. And with the lack of those, it calls into question the atmosphere of team. So if our, if our board isn't acting like a team, what is that showing our students? And that's a trickle down effect. So the board helps with the superintendent down through the, that administrative structure. And that goes down to the teachers, and the teachers go down to the students, and the students go back to families. So in that kind of tree pyramid shape, we're not doing the community justice. We can't even communicate ourselves. Now, we are adults, we have our own opinions. But opinions aren't necessarily data driven fact.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So we can have the side, the side talks and bring those to a, like a third person, then gather in a fourth person. That fourth person is like, oh, this fifth person will know, something like that. And it should evolve in that fashion. These students that are graduating, they need to know they're going to go into a team atmosphere. Very, very few jobs and careers will be solo. It's going to be a team. And very few are not going to involve data driven decision making.
Yeah, yeah. I love, 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 love that. I can't say it enough. How much I love, you know, the fact that when it's not being shown that discussion, that commentary, that back and forth. And not like a, a negative back and forth, but a healthy, you know, let's hear each of our perspectives, let's, let's, you know, chew on and, and, you know, kind of. You know, balance out all these ideas that we're having when we're not doing it at the table. It really does. You know, it, it does say something about what's going on at that table. And it is also, we do, we should be, and we are setting the tone for the district, unfortunately, you know, the, the tone that we're setting at this time. You know, and, and it's important, it's important for our community to know that part of the why, you know, it's important to have that commentary, to ask questions, to pick each other's minds, to. You know, to understand where we're coming from, so that we can get to a unified voice. Is so that one, we can, you know, we, we're showing the respect that we have for each other. At least that's ideally what it would happen. And, and that trickle down, it, it, it impacts and reflects in the district, you know. So I really appreciate you, you know, just kind of noticing that, you know, bringing that to light. I am looking, just so you all know what this is, and I'm going to keep saying it, Leland, because I don't want anyone to forget your name. We have Leland Snooks here. He is running for JPS School Board. You all are going to have an opportunity on November 8th, Tuesday, to vote for him. So if you love what you hear tonight, which I'm sure you will. Tell yourself and all your family members and friends, and make sure you're taking somebody with you to the polls to vote for Leland Snooks. Let's get him on the school board. Leland, another question for you. So what gaps, you know, do you see? And actually, I kind of wanted to give you an opportunity. I don't know if you want to kind of run down your platform, some of those specifics that you have on your platform?
Yeah, we can do that. So some of the, just a few of the main points. I've noticed that the teachers don't have a lot of the support that they're due. And I definitely think that's also a budget thing. That we need to put more money right directly back into the classroom. And to do that, you have to give it to the people that are dealing with your children and students every Sunday. They are essentially the frontline and the visual of what's happening and what students are needing. And also, that kind of feeds back into giving resources to the families. Not every family has all the resources and the know how to even assist with their children and homeworking. That feeds into the disabilities. They need assistance with coping and with, well, how do I help my child learn? Because I don't know how to accommodate that. So we need to give resources.
And if it's okay, if it's okay, I'm going to kind of just commentary as you're talking, just because I, I, you know, want to just kind of, kind of hammer some of these points home to our community as well. I do, we do have just one comment on here from Aisha. She says that she does hear a lot from teachers. It sounds like, you know, that a lot of them, you know, echo what you're saying right now. So I really appreciate you for bringing that forward. One of the things I wanted to kind of just add in there as well is that as a board, and so I'm going to kind of jump around a little bit. But as a board, we do vote by majority. One of the things that I mentioned even in one of our last meetings. Was that, you know, most of us on the board ran a campaign that said that we would be focused on parental engagement. And on, you know, resourcing our teachers. So we all have these same thoughts, you know, at least we're saying that before we come in. And then sometimes when we get at the table. You know, it doesn't look like, you know, because I'm two years out now, you know, and I'm like, that was one of my things. I want teachers to be well resourced. And what we, what our community may not know is, is that unless individuals who are at that table are willing to vote in favor of. Policies and practices that will bring these ideas, such as more teacher support, that will trickle down to families. Unless there are these voices sitting at the table willing to vote in favor of that, it doesn't happen, regardless to what someone says out there, you know what I mean? One thing I think I love about you, Leland, is that you have all this experience as a sub teacher all around the state of Michigan. And so you know, and your heart is for teachers. And actually, I thought about this after I spoke with you on the last. Meeting that we had last Wednesday. And I'm, and I kind of just kind of recognized in myself, I said, I have a huge heart for parents, because I'm a parent. You know, I'm constantly, you know, so I'm there for teachers as well, but I'm, my heart might be just a tiny little bit bigger for parents. Because I'm a parent, you know what I mean? But I love that your heart is so huge for teachers, you know, and I think that you'd be a real strong advocate for them. So I just really love that. I wanted to just put that out there.
Oh yeah, no, and that, you know, that would, that's a great balance. We both have differing, but similar perspectives on education. So it's great to have multiple perspectives when you're coming to a table. Because I don't have those kind of perspectives, because I don't have children. And I have this huge education that's objective to that, because I don't have children.
Right, yeah.
Great. And also I bring, I think this is actually a decent talking point. I'm openly part of the LGBTQ community. And I don't see that on the board. So Jackson is growing within the LGBTQ community. And having been subbing in Jack's public schools, I, many, many students are part of that community or up and coming to that community. They need more support, as well as black students. Other, any other race, all of them. It needs to be more actively supported.
Yes.
This disciplinary program that's in. Big, big platform. That needs to be completely reworked.
Yes, yes.
Expulsion, suspension, detention for minor instances. We don't talk the same as we used to.
Yes.
50s, we don't act the same we used to in 70s. The culture is still different from when I was in high school.
Yes, yes.
We have to deconstruct, then reconstruct how we are looking at things.
Yes, yes.
Our students will benefit from doing that with the disciplinary measures. And for those on the board that don't realize that. Then maybe it's about time that this data driven decision making comes into play. Because that will also benefit the community, most likely home life.
Yeah, oh yeah, without a doubt.
So I really hope anyone that does watch this understands the importance of any campaign. And any candidate that is campaigning, if that's not on there.
Yeah, 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 yeah. One of the things I know.
Very wise decision on who you vote for.
Yeah, one of the things I talked about a lot during my campaign a couple of years ago was how important representation was. For individuals from my community, so little black girls, you know what I mean? Them being able to see themselves, how important that is. And so I really appreciate even you, you know, you're, like you said, you're 32. You know, that's young blood, you know, I mean, and not, you know, but that's a good thing, you know what I mean? Having someone with a young perspective, I think of like, you know, so we're a Facebook community here in Jackson. But there are so many people who are on Snapchat and Instagram and, and like, at my little small age of 40, 41. Like I have not, like, I came up on Facebook, okay, and AOL, you know what I'm saying? And that was where. You know what I'm saying? But some of the younger folks, they, you know, they're so aware of, you know, and they're in a different, they're in a tight, in, in, in an entirely different. Place in society. So like you said, we're not in 1950s, 1960s. What worked back then is not working now. And you mentioned this last week, which I was really appreciative of. We talk differently now, you know what I mean? The, the, the conversations are different. The slang is different. The, you know, the, the, the ways that we move our hands and different things like that, they mean different things now. And having someone who's, you know, younger, I think on the board would be really beneficial to the board, you know, and then also representation. Our LGBTQ plus community, you know, they need representation as well. So as much as, you know, and I've had a few of them reach out and say, hey, look, you know, I really wish someone like you were on the board, talking about myself. When I was coming through, but you know, the limited. The limitations that I have in relating to that community, they're there, you know, I recognize them, you know what I mean? So I'm going to do as much as I can, but having someone who's openly from that community and not afraid to advocate for. um, and not afraid to advocate for them, I think would be a huge plus for our students, you know what I mean? And, and hopefully folks are, are recognizing that. Representation, it matters, period, you know what I mean? So, yes, oh, Mike should say, we love young blood, we do. Right, you had some more things on your platform, I think, though?
I, I did, um, but one other thing I want to go back to is I want the voters to understand that, because I did see this in some of the board meetings by some of the people that chose to speak their mind, which I'm all for it. You let us know this, that was your time to talk when you're in there. But still, I and most every other person that was born white is born with white privilege.
Yes, yes.
So you have to understand that when we rework things, we need to rework out the white privilege.
Yes, praise Jehovah. I need, I need to have a praise break. I need to have a praise, I never had a praise break. No, let me stop. Yes, okay, sorry, go ahead.
That is something I understand from the community. And remember how we said um, that you have a kid or children in the system? And I don't creating different perspectives. I have a white perspective. I don't understand the black perspective. So this is what, these are things that I need to have, and I always have to be open to that communication. That is really important to me, especially for being on the board. And honestly, it's helped being part of the LGBTQ community. So it, it's taught me how to listen.
Yes, and that's what we, we need so much of. I mean, that's, that's the beginning step, right? Just to listen, that's the first step, you know, but it's, it's, they don't listen, I mean, people don't listen. People don't listen. Did, did you want to share anymore from your?
One more, I would like transparency. That is a huge thing with me. With any business company, corporation, anything, as much as you can show the better, the more people can understand, the more you can explain by someone go, well, what is this? Well, why did you do that here? That gives the sense of belonging.
Yes, yes, yes.
Will have the chance to hear like, okay, well, that makes sense and still confused. And clarity is communication.
Yes, yes.
So more clear explanation of budgeting and where money is going. I am all for that. There may be a time when something is super sensitive. But if that time is not there, then be transparent.
Yes, I love that. I, I absolutely love that. I love even, even, you know, because it's some of the other things that I'm, you know, hoping to, you know, during my time on the board, I feel like I've accomplished it if, if I create it, and that is ownership, that is belonging. That is, you know, and I love that, that you said that, that, you know, when we're transparent and we allow people to ask those questions and let them know that, hey, we want your questions, we want to hear from you, you know, we, you know, this is yours, take ownership of it and, you know, and feel free to, 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 um, to drill us to, until you understand what we're doing and then offer us suggestions on ways that we can make it better so that you can take ownership. One of the things that, um, is, you know, the things that really concern me is the lack of, uh, ownership that many of our parents have. And then, you know, so I'm always gonna have that parent lens because I am a parent, you know, but the lack of ownership that they have. Um, and which kind of leads to a lack of involvement, a lack, you know, but if we as a board are saying, hey, we value you, you know, we can't do this without you. You know, if you don't bring our, your students here, we don't have anybody to teach, you know what I mean? So we need you here, you know what I mean? So come on, let's talk about this and let's have some, we're gonna be transparent so that you can feel comfortable to ask us and, and so that you can feel uh, vested, you know, and belong, like you belong in this as well. So I, I really appreciate that, uh, Leland, thank you.
It appears to me that the board as it stands is just functioning. What it should be doing is thriving and causing the system to thrive, this, the education system, so. That would be great. I would love to assist with that. I hope that this gets shared by everyone, to everyone else, to really hear what a candidate that has a passion for education and is not political. Wants to keep politics out of education, let academia deal with academia.
Yes, yes, I love that, I love that. So just so we remember, we're talking to Leland Snooks. He is, uh, one of our JPS Board candidates. Um, November eighth, Tuesday, November eighth, you all are voting, hopefully for Leland Snooks. Again, uh, you know, you vote for him and tell everybody else that you know to vote for him. Um, we have a super chance and opportunity here to get, um, you know, a voice like this, a perspective like this on our board. Um, to continue to develop it and, and, you know, get a group of individuals who are willing to hear from each other, willing to acknowledge each other and willing to, um, recognize what each of our communities need and then to be able to solve together for those. Um, so again, Leland Snooks. All right, so I think we kind of talked about what gap you see yourself filling, or did you want to have any more on that, or?
It's a pretty, I think I fill quite a few gaps. We've covered those and that's to have something well-rounded. I'm not too familiar with some of the other actual board members. And because just by watching those, uh, board meetings, nothing, there's nothing I can gain insight on. They're just people that are there. So I would like to get to know them when I get on board.
Yes, 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 definitely. There, you know, one thing is for certain, for sure, you know, as, as human beings, all of us being human beings, you know, um, relationship matters, you know what I mean? Um, and and we do build that in different ways. And for a lot of our community, you know, um, the only way they can kind of build relationship with us sometimes is through the video by kind of, you know, just kind of getting to know, you know, through their live stream shows. And when we're not engaging, it's hard to, to know who these folks are, except for the one or two votes that they give. You, or one or two words to their votes that they give, you know, that does not provide much insight on, you know, who is this candidate, you know what I mean? Especially if they've been on there for any length of time. So that's very true. So we know that you're watching school board meetings, you know, which I think is really awesome. For one, they can be very long. You know what I mean? They can be long, but to be spending your time kind of doing your homework, um, I think that also speaks to our community about, you know, what you bring to the table. Any thoughts on that?
Well, a community deserves a candidate that wants to do the best for them. So homework is required. It's, I do good in my classes, homework is required. There's no point in a candidate running if they have their own agenda, I'll put it that way. Because I, I have a platform and I have things that I see that need to be done that would benefit it. And it has to be objective, though. Again, it has, you have to see something like, well, this is great, this is what I can see. And you go to that team and you say, let's make this happen as long as it's something that the community needs and wants. You have to listen to that community. So going in with some political uh, agenda or something of that nature, that's not gonna cut it.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. You said, you, you, you kept mentioning that, you know, in different ways, you know, the questions were coming, you know, kind of hot and heavy the last Wednesday, which was awesome. You know, you, you did an amazing job answering, but every time you answered, um, you consistently, you know, in different ways, talked about the importance of hearing from individuals who, um, have direct experience with an issue versus sitting at a table, you know, um, and then, you know, solving for a problem that they've never experienced, you know, so you talked a lot about that, even just now, you, you mentioned that, just, you know, being willing to go to them and say, hey, look, you, this, you're seeing this problem. How do we solve for this? You know, that was really, I thought that was very impressive.
Yeah, there, I was one question. Uh, it had to do with like disabilities and um, how they're getting to, I cannot remember her name, she was a lovely woman. Um, kids were getting to her at almost the point of way past when they should have. And it came down to, well, sometimes, I, I believe that, like you said, a specialist, like get in touch with someone that has that knowledge, that can be of assistance. Okay, if it costs just maybe, you know, an extra like hundred bucks for one hour of discussion to get an insight, that's gonna benefit that student and any student that comes along in the future.
Yes, 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 and it matters, it was worth it.
Yes, and that's, that's really important that we have that access.
Yes, yes, yes. So we are talking to Leland Snooks, he's the candidate for JPS School Board. If you all have any questions, we're, you know, you know, we are only here uh, only on here for about an hour. And our hour is fast approaching, it's already, like, we've already been on here forty minutes, Leland, like, look at what happens when you're having fun. Zooming by. So we are not gonna be on here, uh, much, much longer, but if you all do have questions, this is an opportunity for you to, you know, drop it in the chat. Um, and, and I'll ask of Leland and he's, uh, you know, he wants to answer your questions, he wants you to vote for him, so feel free to ask those questions. Another question for you, um, Leland ownership, let's see commentary. Sorry. So you watch the school boards, I'm looking at all my questions, making sure I'm, I'm getting all of them. Um, um, to be, to, to actually of them.
I, I have something really So I, I noticed in one of the meetings that I do believe that someone on the board actually misunderstood their position. What the board does. And that was also of concern. Because the board does numerous things. The board doesn't affect curriculum. And that was, actually, that was the one thing that stuck out to me is we are the leaders and guiders to assist in that.
Yes, 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 yes.
And if it almost felt like when I get on that board, that my education is gonna be discounted because I assist with affecting curriculum. I'm not saying I'm gonna sit there and write every single note about what a teacher's gonna teach.
Right, right, right.
I want to be a resource for those teachers on how to, you know, change or something, or I could apply a needs assessment.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's when, I think that's also why I just, you know, really appreciate the fact that you're even watching board meetings. Because, um, you know, it's important for the community to know that, you know, sometimes what's said at that table is not necessarily true. You know, now whether it's, uh, said out of ignorance or, you know, sometimes when you have a long time on the board, though, it's, you know, sometimes it's hard to, uh, recog- you know, to understand if, if it was ignorance, if you've had a long time on the board, it's like, hmm, was that really ignorance or not? But there are, like you said, a lot of responsibilities and not, there's not overwhelming, but there is, this is a huge job. Education, I had another friend who was coming to board meetings and one of the ways that he described education in the community, he said, it's like, um, you know, like one of the most important veins um, in a community, you know, that, that pumps, you know, blood to, you know, the heart. But it's a huge vein, it's one of those veins that, you know, I don't know the jugular or, you know, whatever these veins, I'm, I, I did not do biology, listen, I like people, not blood, okay? But one of the more important veins in our system, you know, our bodies, when we're comparing education to, you know, um, its importance in the community, education is huge, you know, so I think I really love that about you, education first. You know, let's keep, keep, let academia take care of academia. I really like the, the way that you say that. Because, um, when we don't know our role as board members, then we're not impacting those areas that we should be. You know what I mean? When we're not, you know, when we're not looking at the duties and responsibilities of a board member, which is also to set the, the dis- we, we, we set the, the, the direction of the district in conjunction with the superintendent, but he is, you know, just part of that eight members, person, that eight-member board, you know, he's not a voting member. Uh, but he's there to offer guidance, he, she, or they, whoever that superintendent person is. But when we as board members, if and when we don't know our role, then we are not impacting education as we should, and that vein is weak. You know what I mean? It becomes weak and then, you know, because I mean, what happens to a community that doesn't educate its children well? You know what I mean? What happens to tomorrow? You know what I mean? When we don't recognize that, so, you know, I really appreciate you. Um, just acknowledging or just recognizing your need to do some homework. Let me, what is this board that I'm, that I'm walking into? You know what I mean? Am I prepared to, you know, what, what, how might I even assist in, you know, bringing cohesion, you know, me, bringing collaboration, how might, you know, I'm sorry, really appreciate um, you bring, you, you mentioning those things. Any other thoughts, Leland, before we kind of close? Because I think we're about ready to get, you know, go to some last minute thoughts.
Yeah, and for all the community members that see this, and I want them to be assured that with me going in to be a member, I'm not just gonna be a yes man to other candidates. They're not candidates, to other board members. And I don't just jump in as part of a group and I'll align with, you know, I agree what you're saying, I agree what you're saying. I, I need the facts, I need to see, you know, why you're saying this. And perhaps I do see, you know, the, the facts behind it, and it is something that I am agreeable to. Maybe it's not, and I will have to say, you know, I don't agree with that, and it does go against your grain, but that's just not something I'm willing to sacrifice for the sake of education. And it doesn't make sense because it's not assisting the children. And this seems like a very arbitrary decision, and I'm not going to be for it. And then I will let the community know why I voted this way.
Yes, yes.
So this, it is purely about education, our students and the community. So I really hope that people will get out there and vote. It is important to vote. This is, uh, gonna affect your children and the community and your schools, and you deserve the best.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you so much, Leland. I, I, I think we'll touch really quickly on just the importance of voting, like you said, you know, um, how important it is, get out there and vote, you know, you don't get elected unless people get their votes in. Um, unless they're choosing you, unless they're also asking other folks to choose you as well. Um, so people, remember Leland Snooks, JPS School Board candidate, um, hopefully board member with your votes, he will get in. Um, we'll just touch real briefly on voting. It's, voting is our way to make our voices be heard, you know, we choose, you know, who gets put in by our votes, you know, voting, um, it, it's a tally system. So the more, you know, the individual, whoever gets the most votes is the one who wins. You know, there are five candidates running, there are two seats open. And whoever gets the most votes win. I mean, this is your way of saying to, you know, your children, to yourself, to your community, this is the perspective that we want to sit on that board. Um, so that, you know, so that our voices can be heard, so that, you know, all the things that Leland represents that they are, you know, sitting at that table as well. So vote, vote, vote. Any thoughts on just voting as a whole? Uh, Leland, that you might want to share with the community?
Everything you said, it's very important to get your vote out there. The old saying is, you don't vote, you don't complain. And, but I would, you know, amend that to say you, if you don't vote, you're saying to yourself, my voice doesn't matter. And your voice does matter.
It does, yes.
So definitely get out there because I think your voice matters. Your voice is gonna matter when it's telling me something sitting at that table.
Public comment time, you know? Right. Thank you so much, Leland, for this late night conversation. Um, allowing the community to be able to hear from you, to be able to get to know you, to get to know where you stand and where you'll, who you'll be when you're sitting on that board. Um, thank you all, um, you know, our Facebook community for showing up. You know, for coming out, um, for, for hearing from, for, for, um, from Leland. I remember Leland Snooks for JPS School Board. Um, not only are you voting for him, but you're telling all your family members and friends, let me be clear as well, you know, I'm about to close. But a lot of times when it comes down to voting, people are also voting for the name they see the most. So please share Leland's name, please share if you don't have a sign already in your yard, and I know we have just a couple of days left, but it matters. If you don't have a sign in your yard and you're willing to get a sign put in your yard, please contact, uh, Leland and let him know on his Facebook page. I think they can send you a private message and Leland will be looking those, looking for those messages. If, when, when we're not friends, I know that it doesn't come up right away, but Leland will check. Um, get a sign in your yard. Um, we're a Facebook community here in Jackson. Share, 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 share his information, um, so folks can know, because again, we already have a sign, someone wants a sign, and she's actually in a really good spot. But, um, share his information, because again, people vote on the name that they see most. We have a, just a couple of weeks, but we can get Leland elected if we all do our part to uh, get his name out there and tell everybody. So again, thank you, Leland, for coming. Um, thank you all so much for coming tonight as well to hear from him. Um, you all will see a meeting of diverse minds again. I'm not gonna say when, because I think we're going back into sabbatical. I have so much going on in my life right now. Um, but, but soon I will be back, you know, it, it'll probably be in January, but I'll be back. Um, it's just been a bit of a crazy, crazy, crazy year. But again, thank you all so much for coming. Thank you for be, being members of the diverse mind community. And I will see you all later. Bye.